Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this first Board of Education for the City of Waterbury's 2021 Workshop. Happy New Year to each and every one of us attending from the board, and Happy New Year to everyone watching from outside on their computer screens or on their TV sets. Our first agenda item for tonight is a silent prayer, and Dr. Ruffin, I would assume you have some comments to lead us off?
I do not have any specific comments for our silent prayer today, other than I ask that we keep all of our employees, our staff, our students, and our entire community in thought and prayer as we continue in to navigate the pandemic, but also make some decisions that are going to be outstanding for our students as we move forward.
Thank you. Commissioner Rocko, would you pledge, lead us in a pledge of allegiance for tonight, please?
Good thing. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic.
Which stands one nation under God.
Under God, indivisible, indivisible, and just as for all. Thank you. Commissioner Anne Sweeney, you have a couple of items to be teed up for tonight's agenda?
Motion to add item 3A agreement with Crown Castle Fiber LLC to the agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no one raising their hand, I'll take that as a all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Commissioner Sweeney, the next item?
Motion to add item 3B MOA with the Waterbury Police Department to the agenda.
Second.
Thank you. Any comment or discussion? I don't see anybody's hands. So with that, I will ask for a, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you. Motion carries. Thank you, Commissioner Sweeney. Tonight's public speaking, I've been notified that there are no speakers on the phone. Is that correct?
It is correct.
I believe it is. I guess Will has dropped off, but that was a word I got before we went on the air. Was that in play? No public speaking? No one's there? So our first agenda item?
You may want to introduce our student rep-
Oh, yeah, I forgot. Thank you, because I already talked to Reese. Our student representative from Kennedy, Reese Musino, is that how I pronounce your last name, Reese?
Yeah.
All right, welcome.
Welcome, everybody.
Hello.
Welcome, Reese.
And is Vivian your colleague on the line?
No, she couldn't make it tonight.
Okay. I thank you for joining us, Reese, and hopefully you'll enjoy yourself tonight.
Glad to be here.
We're glad you're here, too. Now, Reese. Agenda item number one, Committee on School Personnel. Looks like there's a whole bunch of people here. Noreen Buckley, Jackie Davis, Lori Eldridge, Janice Epperson, Erica Alonso, Linda Leihau, Jessica Casio, Wendy Owen, Ellen Pollino, Melina Rodriguez, and Nari Tousset. I screwed up your name, I'm sorry, but so who's going to take the lead? Is this Noreen?
Actually, Commissioner, the committee has been working, this is Verna Ruffin, Superintendent. I have several people that have been working on some very important work for the district. And while they presented this to our personnel committee, Commissioner Stango advised us to present it to the board. We're excited. It's not a for-voting item, but it is an item that shows our board members the direction that we're headed to provide counselors at all levels, and to be very specific about the jobs, duties, and responsibilities of the counselors, social workers, and psychologists in our district as we move forward to best meet the needs of our students. I believe that Melina Rodriguez and Nari Tousset are going to take it over because they have been on the road with this show, so they know exactly how to be able to present it, so I'll turn it over to them.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. This is Nari Tousset. I'm sure in front of you, you have the three school counselor job descriptions. We are currently separating each of the job descriptions according to level. Each level, each school counselor job description reflects what we all do that is the same at each level, however, also separating the developmental differences. They also reflect a proactive approach utilizing a comprehensive school counseling framework with regard to academic career and social emotional. So at the elementary level, we want to expose the students. Middle school, explore, and then at high school, really developing a plan for post-secondary success.
Okay. Who's next?
Good evening, everyone. This is Melina Rodriguez.
Hi, Melina. Welcome.
Thank you. The work that we also did was to divide these roles so that they were specific, so we would know what work we were going to do moving forward with social emotional learning for our students. So what we did was when we defined the roles for the school counselors, we said, okay, we need to clarify what the roles for the school psychologist and the school social workers were going to be. So I know that you also will have copies of those revised job descriptions in front of you. The school psychologist and school social worker job descriptions were now condensed to the one page, and the focus was going to be on, again, proactive work, collaborative work with the school counselors and with each other, as well as preparing school teams with students, with evaluating them and determining if there are other needs that they need to be able to learn, and connecting them with the community. So the school social worker and school psychologist positions were clearly defined that way, and we're hoping that this is going to jumpstart how we're going to support our students in terms of their social emotional learning path.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Charles Stango, is your hand up?
It is. It is, Chuck.
Okay, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to say that this panel, extensive panel brought by Dr. Ruffin to personality the other night did an excellent job in much more detail describing what these new job descriptions were, what they entailed, and the whole plan going forward, and how it fits into Portrait of a Graduate. And we had the job descriptions that night, and you have them all in your packet tonight. And it was a great job, and I wanted to thank them all for doing that, and I also wanted them to come tonight in case there was a question that this board would like to ask regarding these job descriptions, and I wanted them to have the opportunity to do that before it progresses any further. So that's why I'm here tonight. I thanked them for coming, and I wanted to give the board an opportunity to ask them questions for more information or make any comment they would like.
Thank you, Commissioner Stango. Are there any questions for any of our presenters tonight? Not all at once. Don't be bashful. President Harvey, I see your hand waving.
Yes, I was trying, yes, wave my hand and then make sure I touch, get, touch myself off of mute. Okay, first of all, I want to congratulate the panel. I had the opportunity of listening in on the more deep, I thought it was going to be a little bit more detailed this evening, because I thought that was great, too. That not only would give our public the opportunity to hear about what, you know, we're presenting in the district. So I will, I had some questions. My first question pertains to the elementary, let's see, counselor, elementary school counselor. Now, we have pre-K through eight schools. And is Juan Mendoza on the line, by the way?
Yep, he's there. He's waving.
Okay, because I thought Juan, I'm sorry, but I just immediately, when we think of these schools, I immediately go to Reed School. But anyway, I thought about the pre-K through eight schools, counselor in those schools, and then the regular schools, you know, one through four, one through five, et cetera, kindergarten through five. Now, my question is, and this may be, it's not going to you, Juan, it's going to Dr. Ruffin. What is the difference between the counselor who will be in the grammar school counselor? What is the difference between their responsibilities there and the middle school?
The difference between a counselor that's going to serve a pre-K five school and someone who's going to serve a pre-K eight school is that the counselor has an opportunity to build relationships with the students for their entire cohort while they're in that particular school. So whether it's a pre-K eight where they will have to not only help students with the transition from eighth to ninth grade, or elementary who will be helping their students transition from fifth grade to sixth grade, it's still about building those relationships and connecting and helping students to be able to transition from one grade to the other, helping families and being a resource to both the student and the families. So the difference in, is that for a middle school, is that that middle school is building those relationships in the cohorts of students in grades six, seven, and eight. And in a pre-K eight, they're having the students for a longer period of time. They're building strong relationships for a longer period of time with one transition. And middle schools probably have two transitions of building that relationship between fifth and sixth grade and between eighth and ninth grade. So those are essentially some very simplistic differences between what a counselor would be and do in an elementary or in a pre-K eight or in a middle school.
Okay, thank you. And just some other questions, President McDonald. I think it was Liz, Commissioner Brown, that asked, when are we going to determine how many of those counselors will be in each school? So if you look, I'm going back to the pre-K through eight school, and the focus on sixth, seventh, and eighth, and I understand what you're saying about those relationships that have been built throughout those years, okay? However, in middle school, it seems like it's more focused, the sixth, seventh, and eighth, it's middle school. And things they have to do to prepare those students for high school. With the pre-K through eight, they're responsible for the whole school building those relationships, but when they reach sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, there is a total, there is a change in focus, and the focus is to get those students ready for the high school. So how many of these counselors are we looking at having in those schools? Are we looking, are we, you looking at one counselor for the pre-K through eight in light of all of that?
We have no counselors in the elementary schools, so we're putting counselors in our elementary schools. Our pre-K eights are going to have one counselor, and our middle schools currently have more than one counselor. The job descriptions are to specify specifically what the duties and responsibilities are for each one of the counselors, our social worker, and our psychologist at all of those levels. So primarily, if you take a look at, so what is going to be significantly different from Waterbury at this point? The specificity of duties and responsibilities and the fact that our elementary schools are now going to have a counselor. The other part that I would like to bring out, although not a direct part of your question, Commissioner, but I hope that it helps, is the fact that when we talk about Portrait of a Graduate and we talk about career and college readiness, we're not just talking about high school. We're not just talking about middle school. We're talking about how do we help children at a very early age and children and families to really understand, you've got to start thinking about where you're going a long time before you get to the senior year. And so this puts that in place with some specificity of jobs and duties. There's also another part of that that will rely on our staffing plans because a one-size-fits-all does not meet everyone's needs, but everyone will get a counselor, all the elementary schools. There are elementary schools that are lots larger than others. This helps us to be able to look down the line at strategic staffing where you can determine if one school needs more than one because their enrollment is two times larger than another school, for instance. And then you have to start making that a possibility through your budget into finance. But everybody gets one, which is a significant start for us since none of the elementaries have them.
Yes, well, thank you. And I'm going to be watching very closely because I think that's, I'm part of the fan club in terms of the counselor in the grammar schools. I'm there with you on that. I'm just concerned about the attention that will be paid with a counselor that has the responsibility of the whole school versus, you know, pre-K through eight versus the middle school. So I'm going to be watching that very, very closely, and I know that our parents are also excited about that. My second question is this. When we go to the high school, and I was able, I saw that, you know, the different responsibilities, financial aid, et cetera, assist with that. I didn't see assistance with scholarships. Is, was that purposely left off, or?
That's all a part of the jobs and responsibilities that we have for our counselors in high school.
I'm sorry?
That is inclusive.
Okay, so that's, I didn't see that in there, in the job description.
That's all a part of their job, Commissioner.
Okay, well, will they know that when they're applying for this position?
They definitely know that.
Okay, my question is-
Karen, if I, Karen, if I may, it's under, it's under the bullet that says knowledge of, you know, financial assistance and FASA and stuff like that. It is there.
But it does say scholarship?
That's the word scholarship, no, financial.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so that's my point, Liz, is that I just want to make sure, I didn't see it there. And my point for bringing that up is because some of our students have had some issues with that in terms of the counselors helping them out with their scholarship. So, you know, I just hope that that's explained to the counselors that you also need to assist, you know, with the scholarships as well.
It sounds like it's embedded in the financial requirements.
All right, well, that's, we're assuming that that's going to be the case, but I just want to, you know, just pointing that out, President McDonald. So I think that's it. Again, I am very pleased with this. I'm keeping an eye on it. I, oh, one other, just a comment, just a comment. Waterbury Voices, we had students that spoke about our counselors, and they spoke about one school having more information than the other, all right? And so I would hope that there would be some way that there's some kind of collaboration with the counselors in each of the schools to ensure that everybody's getting, you know, all of the information, getting the same information, all of the information, all the assistance that they will need. And I hope we just made some notes about that regarding what the students were actually saying in regards to information being shared and not shared. So that's it, President McDonald. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Vice President Harvey. Any other questions or comments? I don't see anybody waving their hands. So ladies, thank you very much. Commissioner Stango, thank you for helping out the cause. And thank you, Commissioner Stango. Do you have a couple more words?
No, just to, just to say again, thanks for the outstanding work. It was a large committee that was present, and they did a lot of work in, under the direction of Dr. Ruffin to get this off. And that's why I really wanted to, for them to come here, and I really wanted the opportunity for anyone to ask questions. So I appreciate that indulgence, President Pagano.
Thank you, Commissioner Stango, and to the rest of your team members, I've been scoping out to see who's who. I see a lot of the team members are here.
They are.
Thank you very much as a team effort, and thank you to the presenters for giving us your guidance and your oversight. So thank you very much. Our next agenda item is Committee on Finance. Actually, there's two Committee on Finances, item number two and item number three. Doreen Biolo, your name is attached to both of them, so why don't you start off the discussion?
Thank you, President Pagano. Good evening, Commissioners, Dr. Ruffin, and Happy New Year to everyone.
Happy New Year to you, too.
Thank you. I just want to apologize that Ms. Riddick-Barron had an emergency late this afternoon, and she couldn't make this meeting. But I will be going over the grant list for the fiscal year 2021. So we come to the board usually every year just to let you know what type of federal grants and state grants that we receive. And I believe Carrie shared the list with you this afternoon, so I'm just going to go over the list. So the grants that are highlighted in yellow are grants that got extended for an additional year, which will be the end of this school year due to the COVID-19. So some of these grants, you know, did get extended, obviously, because of COVID and certain programs couldn't happen, so they extended the time for that. Items in red are just pending the award letter. So just so you know, we know we anticipate to receive these grants, but we're just waiting on the award letter. So as I go through, what you're going to see is the budget amount for that grant. So when you see the words that have carryover near them, that is the amount that was carried over on July 1 of 2020. So that's just the carryover piece when you see carryover. So we'll just start with, we have 21st Century Grants up at the top. Some of these are in different cohort years. Those are the amounts. As you see, we're waiting on approval on three of them. Applications are all in, just waiting on the approval. Same thing with Carl Perkins. The application has been entered. We're just waiting on the approval of that. The new thing you're going to see is the Coronavirus Relief Fund. This is from Curazac Money, but this is the amount that came awarded to the state at $3.6 million. And about 2.7 of that was for PPE. And that grant ended on December 31. So we're going to be closing out that grant over the next two to three months. And then you'll see a little further down, the 9.3, that's the Education Stabilization Funds. That is the Esser-Curazac Funds at $9.3 million. A little under a million was awarded for non-public, and the remaining 8.3 was for the public portion. A lot of that was spent on technology, some PPE. And that grant will, is extended through September 30 of 2021. So we still have through September to spend the remainder of those funds. And then just basically, we're going to go through IDEA, just what we normally would have. We have the carryover, and then we have the current, first, Part B, Part A, and 619 and 611. Those are the standard grants we normally get. We have fresh fruits and vegetables. I'm sorry I missed that one. Again, kids not being in school, but right now, but they're sending home the snack with them for the lunches that are being served, so the snack is going home to the school, to the students at home. We have the Immigrant and Youth Grant, Impact Aid. One of the bigger ones here is the School Readiness COVID-19 Summer Funding. So it was split up, because you'll see when we get to the state grants on the next page, you'll see the School Readiness. School Readiness for the COVID-19 came in under federal, and it was split for July and August. So that is the 1.3 is for those two months. A big section here is on the School Improvement Grants for schools that are in need of improvement. And you'll see that we have SIG II was for the 2018-19 school year, but this is the carryover amount balances. As of this time, all of this has been spent. That's the ones in yellow. Just Gil Martin has a PD to happen, but other than that, all these grants have been spent. SIG III is for the current year, 1920 carryover in this year. That also has to be spent by June 30, and that money is also getting spent down quite nicely. SIG IV was for this current year that we just sent the application in. It was awarded, and that is also being spent down, and we have to spend 80% of that by June 30. Then you'll be going into the Title M grants, so we have the Title I. We have the carryover that was extended because of COVID, so we carried over about 82,000 of that through June 30. And then we have the 1921 carryover of 2.7 million of the 11 million grant. And then we have the current year for 2022, the 11.9 million for Title I. Same thing with Title II. You'll see the amounts that were carried over for 1820. Again, for the 1921 carryover and for the current 2022. Title III, it's the same thing, and Title IV, also the same. So all of these right now, aside from the current one that's 2022, the 1820 and the 1921 have to be spent by June 30. So on the second page is our state grants totaling $65 million. And you'll see right off the top that our Alliance ECS for 2021 is 36.5 million of that 65 million. We also have the Adult Ed Provider. This is the state portion provided to us. We do have a matching piece in the general fund of 1.3, but this 1.9 is the amount awarded to us through the state. We also have some new after-school programs from the State Department of Education. Those are the ones listed there, STE After School, the 169, 660 for each. For Tinker, Doug, and Hopeville, then you have Kingsbury, Wilson, and Wallace and Westside. Our new grant that we pleasantly were surprised that we received, the application is in, it is awarded. We are waiting on the funding, because we get that funding upfront, is our Alliance Bond at $2 million, which will help us to do certain projects in operation and maintenance, to repair and replacement type of grant. And so we were pleasantly surprised to be able to make some repairs and not realize we were going to get that this year. So that was great. Bilingual Grant is 165. Then we have the Commissioners Network Grant for the three middle schools and at $750,000. And for Willby High School, which is in a planning year, so that's $50,000 that they get in their planning year. That, again, also is being spent down, and that has to be spent by June 30. Family Resource Centers for Wilson and Reed. The Maloney Magnets, Whamms, and Rotella is combined into one grant, but then separated out. This is the preliminary award. They get 75% of the grant upfront in around August, and then the remainder will come around April, May based on the enrollment, but the award was 8.8 million for all three together. And then we have the Primary Mental Health, Priority Schools at 2 million. And then we have Extended School Hours and Summer School as part of Priority Grant. Those are being changed due to COVID. I know that Linda was working with Darren, Noreen, and on, you know, the plans for that, and I think they have a good plan going on how they're going to be spending the Extended School Hours in the plan for Summer School. And then the 8.6 million is the School Readiness for 2021. As I said earlier, that's usually over a $10 million grant, but I showed you on the other page, the federal portion for July and August because of COVID was under the federal grant, and this is the remainder from September through June at the 8.6 million. And then we have the Security Grants Carryover and the Current Security Fore Grant. So those are the major grants that we have for 2021. If anybody has any questions on anything specific?
Commissioner Tom Van Stone?
You can add a president, Mr. President, through you. Noreen, this is, when you look at state- Doreen, this is, when you look at state and federal, it's over $100 million. And I know there's some divided up into other schools, carryover, et cetera. Um, it, it would be nice to see, I mean, this was a good overview for us. Um, but a little more detail. I mean, that's a lot of money. Um, and I don't know if there's maybe on the grant application and had a purpose or, you know, description or something to that effect. Um, not to create work if it's already there, just so the Commissioners can see a little better where this money's going, maybe even, I mean, the end of the day, you're in charge of all this money, but I'm sure we have some grant facilitators or whatever their title may be. Uh, just to get a little more information, because $100 million, that's a lot of money. Um, so I'd just like to see if we can get a little more detailed information, even if it's on like the ones you read off, the major ones. Um, you know, maybe a threshold of one or two million and above. And, and just so we can understand and see exactly what we're doing with this money.
Yeah, I believe, um, I think we have done that in the past. I think we had, right?
Yeah.
We have the big black book and we have, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can definitely uh work on that. That's not.
Not everyone, I mean.
Yeah.
Just.
The major, the, the biggies.
Like your recap that you did, basically. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Van Stone.
President.
Uh, Commissioner Rocco Orso.
Thank you. Uh, good job as usual, Doreen. I just have one comment, not a question. All these grants that uh have to be spent by June and by September, June 30th. Just don't wait till June 29th to try to spend the money. So, you know, be prepared and plan. That's all I have to say. Thank you. Because I know Mr. The Commissioner Van Stone and I have said in the past that if we see contracts that come in after the fact, I don't think we're gonna okay them. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Orso.
President Pagano.
Uh, hold on one minute, Vice President Harvey, Commissioner Liz Brown.
Okay, hi. Just a quick question. Uh, I'm really happy to see the expansion of after-school programs to um more elementary schools. Do you know how many schools still do not have after-school programs? Or if you, if you could find out for me?
Yeah, I mean, so any of the ones not listed, because we pretty much put the schools' names. So the ones that you don't see, but I can get you a list for that.
You could get me a list. It's hard.
I can.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner Karen Harvey.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Quick question, Doreen. Um in the past, I recall that before we approved a position um on the paperwork, it had whether or not it was grant-funded or funded some other way. And we used to do that and I've just wondered why we stopped that.
When you receive a position?
Well, when we get the, you know, we get the paperwork, um, and it says, you know, uh, that this position, you know, you're reading the the uh motion and it would say on the, on the, the motion, whether it was grant-funded or whether it was uh funded some other way. And we stopped doing that. I'm just wondering.
Oh, I, I mean, I can't speak to why, um, but I will tell you that um any personnel requisition um cannot go through unless we have the funding in place. So it won't even be entered into our Lawson and our, our, our financial system. Um, a requisition wouldn't even be able to be entered if we don't have the funding.
All right, and that's good. That's good. And Doreen, what I'm asking is this. When we have, do, is there a list of um a book that contains a list of our positions and um job postings, whatever, or, and, and whether it's how it is, you know, that job is funded? Do we have that information?
Well, I, I mean, we do have a list of all of our positions.
Right.
Um, you know, when you receive the budget book, uh, or the operating budget, you'll see all the names. We also have for the grants as well. So I do have a spreadsheet of listing of all of our positions and where they're funded.
You have that personal, personally?
I do have that in the, in our financial. I'm not sure if you're looking at, on a human resource level of what positions are open and where they're funded.
Yes. Yes, I'm looking at, if we, for example, let's take what we were just, the, the last item um that we were talking about, the council, school councils. And I believe that's a grant, I believe that's grant-funded. But I, I don't know.
It's multiple funded, yes. It's, it's grants. I think they're all in grants now at this point.
They're all in grants, okay.
Yeah. Remember how we have um the operating budget? And we had a lot of positions in the operating budget, but because there was no increase to that budget and all the increase went to the Alliance Grant, that we had to move a lot of positions to the Alliance Grant. So right now, all of our counselors are in Alliance.
Okay, all right. So if I have a question about how a position is funded, you have that information, right?
Between myself, yeah. With myself and working with the HR department, yeah. We, we, we will know.
All right, sounds good. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner Harvey. Any other questions, comments? All right, seeing none. We're gonna move on to the next agenda item, which happens to be again, Doreen Biola on the November Monthly Expenditure Report. Doreen, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Um, so this is status through uh November. Um, I just want to point out that, you know, during this pandemic year again, um, we will be seeing some savings in some of the line items, just because we wouldn't be able to hire certain subs or we might have a little savings in some um transportation line or some programs that aren't able to happen due to COVID or, or the hybrid model. Um, so I just wanted to point that, point that out, that any savings that we can, uh, we will try to put through under the sinking fund like we did last year. And on the last page, I did show um about 500,000 right now, maybe being able to be um expended in the sinking fund and transferred for us for future use. Um, whether it's on some type of capital improvement or technology. Um, but I want, just wanted you to be aware that that would be something we would be doing again like we did last year. Um, when you look at teachers, you're looking at a deficit of 800,000. I don't want anybody to be alarmed by that. It is because if you go to the last page in our contingency, we have to balance our budget out to the 158 million of what the city receives. And we use the contingencies to offset um our budget and to balance. So some positions um that we put into the 158 million dollar budget, um, we would need the contingency to balance the budget. But because we have savings, I, at this point, you know, hopefully we won't use any type of contingency and we're gonna be able um to put money into the sinking fund. Um, those are some of the big um points I wanted to make out to the board about, um, about the report uh as we keep going on through the um fiscal year. Any questions?
Uh, Commissioner Rocco Orso, I see your hand up.
Doreen, what's, what's happening with the transportation? With the busing? Obviously.
Uh, you may because of us going on a virtual.
Yeah.
All virtual. Um, well, we're still under the Governor's Executive Order of 7R. Um, so, which we still have to make good on, um, you know, paying our providers. Um, and our, we have the uh three vendors. We have Ambassador All-Star in Durham. Um, Will Clark conducted a meeting that we had with Jeff Hunter, myself, and all three vendors. Um, once we went virtual, um, because again, we want to make sure that, you know, um, the timeframe, if we go back to school uh in January, that we have, you know, the drivers and every, and the buses, the bus company will be able to, to support um what they needed to do for us. So we're still per, you know, under the Governor's Order of 7R. And um, so right now, we're paying our vendors. Um, they have reduced some of their billing based on the number of buses and certain, um, you know, like, I mean, if we don't have the athletic buses moving or whatever and so forth. So we're seeing a savings there, but we are paying the contractual installment.
Okay, thank, thank you.
Thank you.
And if I may, um, President Pagano, just to follow up on that point, uh, Doreen's correct on all those points. But just for the Commissioners' understanding, uh, there is transportation that is still going on, even in this virtual situation. You have a number of the non-publics who are still uh in school and engaged. Uh, we still have a number of special ed outplacements um that busing is required. So as Doreen has described, we've worked with the companies and I, and obviously they're billing for the actual uh that they're doing, um, but they're essentially, uh, we're not having any additional bills, no athletic buses, field trips, things like that. And we've sort of pushed it down to the, the bare minimum uh to keep uh the staff and they're engaged in some training with that staff, preparation for the return, um, monitoring COVID issues, et cetera. So we're trying to maximize uh everything should, you know, should there be issues where this gets extended? I think we'll engage in additional negotiations, but with the short time and the break, um, you know, we were concerned about if we, if there's too long of a layoff of folks, you know, we may not be able to get them back. They may find other employment or, you know, stay out. Um, so we want to be able to, to hit the ground running uh after Martin Luther King Day for our current plans. Um, so we've really balanced it out. I would say all the bus companies have been responsive and collaborative with that effort. And, you know, the bills are trending under um what it would otherwise be had we been in full attendance.
Thank you, Will.
Thanks, Will.
Any other comments for, or for questions for Doreen or, and or Will? I don't see anybody's hand. Earlier tonight, we brought on through motion and agreement, item number 3A, Agreement with Crown Castle Fiber LLC. Who handles that agenda item?
I do.
Will?
Yep. Uh, good evening Commissioners. Dr. Ruffin, uh, the Computer Technology Center respectfully requests your approval of the above referenced contract in the amount of $54,000 for the wide area fiber network between the City of Waterbury and Crown Castle Networks. This contract was initiated under the Invitation for Bid Process, ITV number 6786. There were several bidders for this project with Crown Castle Fiber being the lowest responsible bidder. This contract will allow for high-speed fiber optics-based services uh for 116 Vitra Avenue that will service the students and staff of that building. Uh, once it comes online, the contract is three years in duration from July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2024. Total compensation payable to Crown Castle Fiber shall be $54,000 for the entire three-year term of this contract. Contingent upon full compliance satisfaction of the following payment methods. Um, three annual USF E-rate payments paid directly to USAC, which is E-rate, to Crown Castle Fiber in the amount of $16,380, um, not to exceed a total of $49,140 for the entire three-year term of this contract. The city shall pay Crown Castle in the amount not to exceed $4,860 for an entire three-year contract payable not to exceed $1,620 per year. Any questions?
Any questions, anyone? Commissioner Liz Brown?
Is this a recurring uh contract? I forget.
This is a, a three-year contract, Liz.
But I mean, is, is, have we had them before? Have we used them?
Yeah, so they, they certainly service all our other schools right now.
Okay.
32 other schools. So this is to add, um, St. Pete's will be, wanna get the fiber installed. So when the school comes online, we have internet connection for the district there.
Okay, thanks.
So this is an incremental buy from uh, from, from your vendor?
Pretty much. I had to do a separate contract just because that's by E-rate, because they're paying 90% on the dollar of it. So.
Got it.
Yeah, so it's just an add-on, pretty much. Same contract, just one address on it.
Commissioner Karen Harvey, did I see your hand wave?
Yes, yes. Uh, just quick question. Will, uh, how many did, uh, how many, you put out the bid, how many did respond it?
Three vendors.
Got it. Okay.
Um, Comcast, um, uh, Frontier and Crown Castle.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Welcome. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much, Will. And the next item is number 3B. The Memorandum of Agreement with the Waterbury Police Department. And who is handling that one? Tara Shaw?
Yes.
The floor is yours.
Yes. Good evening Commissioners and Dr. Ruffin. Thank you. Um, you should have before you a draft MOU regarding SROs in our schools. You should also have the statutory language requiring a formal MOU of Boards of Education have SROs in their schools. Uh, Jackie Davis and I worked on this in collaboration with Dr. Ruffin. So there may be certain questions um that are better suited for someone else. But just in summary, uh, you should know that there is an existing MOU with the Waterbury Police Department that focuses on the District Divisionary Referral Program. But that MOU, which dates back to 2013, does not provide guidance or details on the role and responsibilities of SROs in our schools. Uh, that uh is missing, uh, yet an important component. And that coupled, I think, with um, the social climate, public scrutiny of school-based SRO programs and the district's desire to ensure that our program uh represents a mutually beneficial community partnership. I made this the right time to draft a new MOU with the Waterbury Police Department. Uh, the proposed MOU content has been reviewed by the police chief and by Corporation Council, both of whom support the MOU as drafted. So if, if you have any specific questions, I'm happy to try to answer them.
Thank you, Tara. Commissioner Liz Brown.
Hi, uh, thank you very much, uh, Dr. Ruffin and Tara for doing this. I've been very concerned about not having an updated uh MOA. So this is great. Just a couple of clarifications. Under the, under the section where it says key factors in making disciplinary decisions, it says parents' willingness to address and identify issues. I guess I had a little reaction to that because I don't think a child or a student should be penalized because of the parents not paying attention or not being involved. So how do, how do you see that working? Anybody could answer that. I mean, it's, I don't, I just, I don't want the student to be penalized because their parent is not involved. I guess that's, that's my observation.
Tara, I don't know if you want me to answer or you, you were going to respond. I've, I, because I have some information to add there.
Certainly, please. I'll defer to you, Dr. Ruffin.
All right. Um, this MOU does not work in isolation in a way that it has been worded. Uh, it's very clear that there's gonna be collaboration among the schools, the police department and other um others, both within our school system and outside our school system. And not for total discussion during this meeting, but I have been in close contact uh with the DCF and had a, a great, not only conversation, but some plans that will be developing and forthcoming in Waterbury uh as a result of Commissioner Durantis and, and, and her team. That um I think you will be able to see how, if schools are still struggling because there is a disconnect, how services can be provided without involving the police. And I think the board will be very pleased with the way that's going to occur. Uh, I'm, I'm told that, that, you know, it'll be a, a few weeks yet before it comes to fruition in Waterbury, but it is on its way. And I think that part that you're asking a question about is going to be handled because there will be um, you know, those wraparound services that we talked about, but we didn't really have in place. I think you're going to be able to see in a very short period of time and due to Commissioner Durantis uh willingness to work with us and uh, uh, all of the resources that she's going to be providing to Waterbury, I think you're going to see how that is going to be responded to in a way that will not be adverse to the child.
Okay. Uh, thank you very much. Uh, if I may, through the chair, an, another observation. I'm really glad about the Oversight Committee. I think um that would really give it structure and give us some continuity and some data, which I'm very happy about. Um, I'm wondering if we shouldn't uh have in there, or maybe it's just an understanding that this information is shared with the board. I don't see a report to the board at all. It's kind of internal. And I, I would like to see something specific, you know, even if it's semi-annually or something, that this information is shared with the board uh in some way, uh, if that, if that's possible. Uh, the next observation is, where do you see student voice in all of this? Because we've heard, you know, through many webinars, through the social unrest that's going on in our society, uh, the relationship between students and police and some is good, some, you know. So how do you envision student voice in, in kind of this whole uh building this culture of safety and respect and so forth? Because I don't see any role for students in, in this culture. Maybe they could be part of a team, school-based, or just some way so we get student voice in this.
Um, if I, if I can add?
If I, if I can add, under the duties and responsibilities section, number four, when it talks about SROs will encourage individual and small group discussions about law enforcement related to match with students, faculty and parents and guardians. I don't think that was necessarily meant to be in response to a specific situation, but an ongoing dialogue between all of those stakeholders and how to improve relationships, both in the building or things that are happening within the community.
Okay. Now that, I'm glad that you clarified that because I think it's important to have that access for student voice and building those relationships are very important. So thank you very much for your hard work and I'm very excited about this.
Thank you. Any other questions?
President Vigano, just a comment?
Yep.
Um. You know, I'm, I'm wondering, you know, I, I've participated in the Waterbury Voices committee with things and the discussion of SROs in the schools. I don't, you know, whether we want to continue that in light of the, of the, of the climate. I don't know if we've had that discussion on the board. And so it was interesting to get this MOU because I don't believe we've had that discussion. So I know, you know, hopefully, you know, the commissioners know that, you know, the discussions that have been taken with different things that happened in 2020, excuse me, 19, with the relationship with the police and our, and the students. And so, you know, when I read the MOU, I saw that January 2021 was when the contract would be renewed. But I, I just, I'm just questioning, maybe I've missed that meeting. You know, I have perfect tendance, but have we had a discussion, we as a board, as to how we feel about SROs in our schools? You can address that, President Vigano.
Oh, I have no recollection unless you had it while I was off the line for two months during October and November. I wasn't here, so maybe you can enlighten me.
All right. Let me consider it. We did not. And, and I think that that is an important discussion we need to have. I think that, just a suggestion, but I think it's very timely because we have this MOU before us. And I think the public would be really interested in our conversation regarding how we feel, we as commissioners, the Board of Education feels about SROs in our school.
Okay. Any other comments from any other commissioner levels? Then when would we postulate that we're going to have that discussion?
Okay. So President Vigano, I, I just want to make sure, we, when does this contract have to be signed? Because we're, we're not in school right now. When is the?
Tara, is there a time limit on this?
So when we went and looked at this, the statute, this was actually triggered by an FOI request. And it was looking for an MOU because there is a statutory requirement to have an MOU if you have SROs in schools, which we do in an ordinary, non-COVID school year. And the statutory requirements, which came about in 2015, require certain things in that MOU, such as the duties and responsibilities, which the existing agreement really did not speak to. And so this was a matter of when we get back online. We're assuming that the SRO program continues. Again, what you've raised, Commissioner Harvey, is a, is a different issue altogether. But if the program continues, we do need to have an MOU that reflects the statutory requirements.
By when, Tara?
Go ahead.
I think that it should be in place when we resume the program.
Okay. So the discussion would be teed off at committee level first, Commissioner Harvey?
Well, I, I, I think that, yeah, that's, that's, that's a process. But I, I, you know, at some point, I think we need, we just need to have that discussion. I mean, I'm not saying we shouldn't have SROs, but I, you know, I'm saying that we need to, to have that discussion.
I'm, I'm asking, where do we start the discussion?
Where?
Yeah.
I think it should be a full board.
Yeah, I'm sorry?
I think it should be a full board.
I agree. I totally took the words out of my mouth. I agree. I think it should be a full board discussion at a workshop perhaps, or at a, you know, I don't know if we have that, that time of, you know, we should make the time to do that. I think the public and the parents deserve that.
Okay. Commissioner Charles Stanga? Oh, you're muted, Charles.
Okay.
You're there.
I think we should get this MOU off the ground because of the timelines and then schedule sometime a discussion in the future. You know, going forward, but we, we need to get the MOU in place and then worry about a discussion at another point.
Okay. Any other comments?
Just, we should have had this, President Vigano, through you. This discussion should have taken place a long time ago. And that's why I'm trying to pinpoint through the attorney, is it January that this needs to be signed or?
What? Tara? Tara?
When does it have to be signed?
So I, I think that we currently have a program. We currently have an agreement that has been in place since 2013. I don't think that it necessarily conports with what the statute requires. So when we have SROs returning to schools and children in those schools, I think we should have an agreement that satisfies the statute. So if that's, if that's January, it's January. If that is February, then it's February. I think that, I, I don't know that there's any action that would be taken for failing to comply with that, but I do think.
So we're covered by an existing memorandum? And that we have time to work on this and come to a, a full understanding and, and go through it in the detail that I think the rest of the board is looking for. Is that, is that what I'm hearing?
I, I think we do have an existing agreement. I don't know that it meets all of the requirements that are in the statute. It doesn't list the duties and responsibilities of SROs, which I think is a benefit to the program to spell that out and certainly beneficial for community involvement and community awareness of what these programs do and what SROs provide to the schools.
Thank you. Commissioner Tom Van Stone, I see your hand waving.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, through you. I, I think I would agree with, with Charles. You know, put this one in place and use it as the springboard to move forward, to do something. I don't know if CADE can pull off an event for us, you know, to play the intermediary, something to that effect. But I, I agree that if this has language to make us comply, regardless of whatever's on file, I think we need to do it before the building's open. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Van Stone. Commissioner Anne Sweeney, I see your hand up. You're muted, dear.
They're on top of the stuff in the pan.
Yep. I, I agree with Tom. I think we need to get it in place because otherwise we're in violation of statute. I think that certainly a workshop, the next workshop at the beginning of February, we could put this on the agenda for a discussion.
Okay.
I mean, we're at the same point either way today or tomorrow in that we still, we have a program in place. We're asking to have a discussion about essentially whether or not we want to continue that program. That's not going to change between now and February in that discussion. So I think we should address the legalities of the situation as it stands today and make sure that in February, we have that discussion.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Rocco Orissa, did I see your hand up?
Yes, sir. And again, I have to agree with, with Anne and with Tom. We should get this, we should get this agreement before the kids come back to school. And then, like Anne said, at the next workshop, we could agree whether to go further, you know, and have our opinions on whether this should continue or not.
Thank you. Commissioner Nardozzi?
I'll also jump, I'll also jump on that as well. We should be in compliance with what the state statute says. It doesn't create problems for us in the future. And then if we want to change whatever the agreement is after that, we can do so. But in the time being, we need to be in compliance with, with what the state statute recommends.
Okay.
President Vigano?
Yes, Commissioner Harvey.
Okay. I just want to get the understanding from the attorney. We will be, if we don't sign this in January, we're out of compliance?
Our current MOU that exists does not include some of the required points that need to be in the MOU if the district has an SRO program, including the duties and responsibility, a listing of those duties and responsibilities, which the current MOU doesn't have.
Right, MOU doesn't have, okay. Okay. President Vigano, let me just say this. That I don't want us to be out of compliance, but by the same token, this is a discussion that we need to have. So I'm hoping that we will include this on a, on the agenda for our next workshop.
Okay.
All right?
Yeah, we're in agreement with that.
All right. I just want to make sure because we delayed this discussion for a while. So now's the time to talk about it.
When, when you say we delayed, when was it initially introduced?
It should have been, I know that I have had a few discussions when you were out. Not at the meetings, I had to run the meetings. I had, did not have an opportunity to initiate the discussion. But we all know what was going on in the communities and things that were going on. So we should have had those discussions.
Okay, so it was a delay. We just didn't get around to it yet.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions before we wrap up this agenda? Then we'll put it on the next workshop agenda for our discussion. And everyone, thank you very much for your input, for starting this process. Our next agenda item is number four, Committee on Building and School Facilities. And then following is the same thing with Will Clark. Will, you have the both agenda items.
Thank you, sir. And again, good evening, everyone. Happy New Year. Happy Free King's Day. We've got just a couple of permit requests here. The first two from departments are for the Police Department and the Tax Department respectively. These are relatively small meetings at Kennedy. And we've worked with the Police Department and Kennedy as far as the timing and the protocols that will be followed. And we're confident they can get in and out. One of them will be outside of school time. And the, the other, we've, we can clear off the area they'll be using the auditorium so they'll have no cross impact with, with the teachers who will be in the building that day. So everyone was able to collaborate on that. And the other is another little bit of a placeholder, but it's for the Sacred Heart Swim Team. This is a permit that they've used the pool for many years. At this point, CAC is still sticking with that the winter sports will begin after Martin Luther King Day and this is when that permit will, will kick in. So we'll keep monitoring that. And we, of course, work closely with them on, on protocols with respect to athletics and, and entry and, and use of locker rooms and so forth. So keeping an eye closely on all of these, but again, one, the first two is really just collaborating with the city. And the second one is, is a historic permit that we've done and will be consistent with CAC rules as we move along, hopefully, post Martin Luther King Day. So happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Will. Any questions for Will? Seeing no one raising their hand, we'll move on then. Will, did you do both agenda items? Oh, you're all set?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Our next agenda item is on our agenda. It's a superintendent's notification to the board. Dr. Ruffin, I don't know if you wanted to add anything into it, or we can all just read it when we get around to it?
I have a couple of things. I'll be quick. One of the things I wanted to just share very briefly tonight is that, you know, Waterbury Public Schools, along with the Health Department and the Emergency Crisis Team, is currently working on how we're going to be able to supply and bring in in an orderly fashion, a vaccine to our employees. So I'd just like everyone to know that we have been working on this and we're going to continue to until we have a plan that will be released to our staff and that we could have some order and efficiencies on how that vaccine can be administered and delivered. So please, everyone, just stay tuned and the communication pieces are going to be coming out as we receive them in an orderly fashion.
Thank you.
The other comment, I've received some questions about our anticipated reopening in a hybrid manner on January 19th. All of this is contingent upon the status of the COVID-19 in the state of Connecticut as well as specifically to Waterbury. So we are going to continuously monitor. We all do that on a daily basis. And as we get closer to the 19th, we will again share very specific information about when we will proceed in our hybrid model. The anticipated date is January 19th. But we're keeping close watch on what happens after the New Year holiday. And, and as we know more information, we will be more concrete and specific about what that plan will look like on January 19th moving forward. I'm certain everyone is following and keeping lines of communication open as we communicate by, via Parent Square, also messages that I send out to all staff, to all union members and to everyone who is going to be connected with the Waterbury Public Schools. And I want to thank all of the responders who are working with us on making certain that our plan is going to be in response to the needs of our teachers, the staff, all of our employees and our students and community. Very briefly tonight, and I believe Will Zuda has my, my PowerPoint here. It's a very quick one, but certainly one that I believe that, that we need to acknowledge. Will, I don't know if you're going to present that on, or the board members already have a copy of it and they can just follow through there. But we're, we want to remind everyone that the Early College High School application deadline is coming up very soon on January 10th. This is an outstanding opportunity for our current eighth graders to apply for the Early College High School, which is the partnership with Waterbury Public Schools and Post University. This is an opportunity for our incoming freshmen, our current eighth graders, to apply for next year where they will have an opportunity to earn college credits while still in high school and also an opportunity to be able to graduate, not only from high school, but potentially graduate from Post University with an associate's degree. This comes at no cost to our students. We, we want to provide a, a very diverse menu of options for our students across the city. And I think this is an opportunity for our students who are seeking that post-secondary education early and also with the support of attending a, a, a school that can offer supports that sometimes one does not receive in their first or second year of a college or university. We can provide that here for our students and our families. We would like for our applicants to know that the deadline is coming up. So please don't miss out on this wonderful opportunity. If there are further questions, you can call and contact the numbers that are located here. And Crosby High School, anyone there specifically in, in the administrative department can provide answers and answer questions that you might have about this amazing school at Crosby High School, the Early College High. We're very pleased that our Tinker teacher has been recognized. Ms. Elizabeth Elagano was featured in Amplify Reading Newsletter last month. She was recognized for her continuous efforts to embrace literacy as a way of life for her students. So congratulations to you. It is wonderful to have a celebrity in our midst. Our students were participants in the United Way of Greater Waterbury Upstarters Campaign, where they created over 1,000 holiday cards. And those cards were specifically designed for our healthcare professionals. Some of the cards were given out at Waterbury Hospital and. Some of the cards were given out at Waterbury Hospital, and yes, all of these employees have smiles under those masks, and we have a few pictures to share with you. So I want to thank our students and certainly the Greater Waterbury United Way for allowing us to participate in such a meaningful, meaningful way to our healthcare providers. North End Middle School Choir, Mr. Camacho, the choir director at North End, had students perform virtually, and once again, this is an outstanding rendition of Sleigh Ride. We have that for our board members. You can view this, and it's a wonderful way, even though we are past the holiday season, I think it's quite uplifting, and I hope that you take some time to listen to their great performance. Mr. Camacho and the North End Choir have performed for us. West Side Middle School Winter Art Show demonstrated outstanding artists in the district, and we want to thank Ms. Doreen Asto, who showcased many fabulous artwork from her students, and to thank all of you to elevate fine arts in such a wonderful way. So thank you, Doreen. And you will see some examples here of outstanding work. You can hardly believe that those are work of children, but they are, and very importantly, they're our children. So I'm so grateful for their talent and that they've shared that with us. This will conclude my announcements at this point, Commissioner. So thank you for allowing me to present these.
Thank you very much, Dr. Ruffin. And your, your notifications to the board are on the agenda that each of us can, can read at our leisure. Commissioner Tom Van Stone, do I see your hand waving?
You did, Mr. President. Thank you, through you. Dr. Ruffin, would we be able to get a copy of that presentation? I don't think we have it, unless it's in a backup. I'm not sure.
Yes, absolutely. I thought that you did, but, but I can send it to you right now.
Yeah, I didn't see it on my email either.
I'll send it to you so that you can see it and listen. Thank you.
Beautiful. Thank you. Any other comments? We are going into executive session. Commissioner Liz Brown?
Just, just a quick question. Dr. Ruffin, you sent us a notice that you're, you're going to the State Board of Education on January 19th. Is that part of the Alliance District updates?
No. No, Commissioner, not this one. This is, this is, this is just a special convening of the committee, the accountability meeting, and they've asked me to present at that point. It's not the, this Commissioners Network presentation at this time.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments before we move on to executive session? No one's waving their hands, so we're going to move on to executive session.
Who goes into executive session, Sir Vigano, so I know?
Who goes?
Yeah. So I can, I guess I'll remove everybody else from the, put them in the waiting room. I'll make you the host.
Uh, yeah.
That should be the Commissioners, myself, and Mr. Mendoza.
Okay. I'll take care of that now.
And then we'll, we'll only be coming back to close out the meeting, so everybody can go off.
Okay.
Commissioner Anne Swinney?
One.
Anne Swinney, would you do us the honors of bringing us back out of executive session? You're muted, dear.
Motion to return from executive session. No votes were taken.
Second.
Discussion, comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The ayes have it, motion carries, and we are now back in regular session.
Motion to adjourn.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion or comments? Please signify if you're in agreement by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, please signify. Ladies and gentlemen, have a wonderful week. See you on the next meeting.
Bye.
Good time. Feel better.
Bye.
Good time. Feel better.